The town phone select board meeting October ninth, two thousand twenty five, six oh one, you know, like to call meeting order or remember rule call. Carl Schreuer.
Amy Alexander.
Mike Gardner.
Amy first.
Well, mine is for the political meetings.
For my reading, this is the vibe of the United States of America. And it's the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever he and justice for all.
Approved of the agenda, we need to add excess weight permits. I'd like to add since uh discussion of science, certainly on. Common office parking areas. You know, put on the church and and I would add the zoom ID. It's have an idea on that. Would add the zoom ID. Right after the approval of the agenda. And the signage can go. Anywhere.
So it's going to be a chapter from the.
I just want to cover something before we get out of there. So the signage um. Let's put that in after updates and town officials. We are in the new town event. All right, here, most of the agenda with those additions and the excess weight from sorry can go. Yeah, they go after lunch.
I wanted to approve the agenda with additions.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, zoom ID. And this is um. This is in relation to our last. Regular. Um, what I'd like to do as a board. Is anybody who is in our zoom. Room in the in this meeting via zoom. Uh, before we carry on, I'd like this every every meeting. Before we go any further, I would like them to be identified as who they are. In our first last name in in that zoom room. And then anyone that comes in as the meeting goes on. They need to identify themselves and not just with some. Crazy name.
Email.
Oh, make that as well. Absolutely.
Already found in the meeting with a lot of people and. How how do you want them to like that?
That's the that's so so that's not my strong point, that's something that that. I I don't know how the zoom part of it works, how he would let someone in or whatever. I think when we start this meeting, as we're inviting people into the meeting, I think we need to know who they are and what will happen.
Look at the suggestion.
Absolutely.
I think they have heard the last name. And the other thing that I can do is have everyone who wants to come in turn on their camera. It's very normal for people to turn it off sometimes, but if you want into this meeting or having issues, turn on your camera so we can.
Rebecca always had us turn our cameras on when we.
I just, I'm I'm trying to do away with things that have happened that town official or or I guess select board or whatever else has happened. I I just wanna. Get away from that and and turn that around and I think. If it had I I love that suggestion, I just wanted to bring this up in discussion right now. Before we get very far into the meeting, I know we have, I know we have discussion, I'm here later.
So Hannah can verify then by.
That's correct.
Last name and that's where it's all.
The only thing I'm thinking with that is that when it happened to Kate during a planning meeting, the people did have a first and last name, and if they had their video turned on, the only problem is you. If we didn't know the person, we can't be, we can't come in because we don't know you.
Right.
Um, so it could be somebody that is planning to hack the meeting during the meeting and then you could see their face still, but then they could still do it.
But.
During the meeting.
You can't see their face until after you let them in, right?
Yeah, you can't see them until.
That's the thing, you can't see their face until when.
Yeah.
Do you.
But I do think maybe kind of found it maybe another option.
There's security options that you can lock down, well, there is nice discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, not during a regular meeting, but if we, yeah.
Which I think is correct. Be additional. Yeah, I I mean, I my recommendation would be not to get rid of some. Yes, they try to introduce the webinar or the others.
Wait, that's right, I'm I'm just trying to protect us till we got down to that.
No.
Yeah, that's all, that's all, just trying to protect you before we got.
Let me understand, there was already one that just said uh initials and keeping them within.
Once the board's party.
Make a motion that. If you want to let in or meaning that you have your first and last name listed and want share a lot of them. Ask you to utilize your camera.
So you don't need to.
No, verify it.
I'll second that. I'm not sure if the public team, people don't want me to.
Oh, for crying.
It's okay.
Does that work or do something else?
I have a motion I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, public camera. Jenny.
Um, so I was trying to figure out what the date was when we talked about the last time we talked about the Old Town Hall committee. And um the it's gonna be a uh. Feasibility study and I'm sure feasibility of what, but a feasibility study. So I was curious what the update on that feasibility study is and when you're gonna go back to putting together this committee. And it's not on the agenda, so I I know that it's supposed to be comment, but. Think.
I haven't working on pulling together numbers and stuff like that before we start with feasibility study, but. Okay, I'll get back to the last meeting and I will be in the next meeting about my thoughts on the committee. Were um, I don't feel like we should limit who was on the committee and I I don't feel like we should be asking them certain questions, I feel that. Anyone who wants to participate on the committee should be able to. Um, I don't feel like we're gonna have like this huge outpouring of people that are like. There for us to do this, so I think we should accept anyone who's willing to work with me. As far as working on committee and trying different things, looking for money to pay for feasibility study or just finding an option when that's right, thank you.
Hannah, I'm sorry.
Bye.
Well, we had till it was the the deal was that the feasibility study would be completed by the October meeting.
That's not.
And yes, it is, that's what that's what we decided by the board possible.
My point of order. My point of order and public comment is public comment.
That was uh, we were told that it would be October, that um the feasibility study would be completed by a meeting in October. And that then we would readdress the committee and I just want to remind the board that this is the board's decision. Tara, all due respect, but it's not working with you, it's working with the town uh overall. And so to say me is actually a little bit angry, but so.
Not familiar.
I would like so um, so I just that's that was that's what was decided at that meeting. Um, and so I'd like to know when that study will be in and if we are gonna follow through with. Creating a committee in October as as was decided.
And as with any public comment. Jenny, that will be answered um. The question we will be answered, probably be getting. Um, we're not.
Then I'll go public records your question where we are.
I don't like that, that's necessary, I didn't hear you. And we are able sometimes by for, though, yeah, I but I do think though might be helpful is. Um, well, I do like the idea of moving forward. Like with the with the committee and um. I also think. To your point, um. Right, I did inundate it. But if you people want to go to this committee, like we have to work sometimes to get people involved to decide what my people want to like send messages, but to get people really involved in it. So I also like that idea of opening it up. To whoever's interested in that way that's. Sort of portal poses any allegations of, well, there will be like certain people in and how many people who are liked. And so it just kind of seems to me that you've got a solution right here.
And I always say me because I am one with the board.
Of course, you are the one who was joining us. But what she brought, yes, it sounds like the main board of the committee and a lot of people want to be on it to be on the committee.
Yes, I know some people have the mindset expressing interest to be on the committee and have it for that, so. Um, so I'd just like to know where we go.
I think we can definitely take that route some more. If you not right now, seriously, but maybe get. That's so jungle. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Yeah, I I um. Playing off of any sort of that. I look like the, you know, specifically. Feasibility block. Before before you. So as if people were drunk, maybe they should. You know, add zero down a little bit more, so. You know, how how wide they don't follow feasibility doesn't. Give much. Um, we know specifically what. What the feasibility of. It would be really helpful.
I I think that's a that is a question out, right, like what, if anything, should be done, right, with the Old Town Hall and what is feasible to be done?
So maybe maybe feasibility isn't the right term, but in in to you Jenny's point, actually. Um, we probably should have thought about that a little bit at the time.
It's a good time that's new professionally, it it looks at all of the options from. Brand new side view doing nothing.
So it has has the third party.
So what I want to make, I want to make another, I mean, I I make it, yes, I make another. Got it. Point of order, because this is common and we're getting into discussion, right?
So. I think we need to um. Maybe maybe look at the terminology a little bit differently. But I know I understand where Tara's coming from because feasibility can. Do you have a broad. Term, but I think it's had multiple meanings.
Mike, I'm gonna say this for the third time. This is public comment, this is for the public to comment, not for us to talk.
Thank you, Carl. So I think that we'll look at this, we'll probably bring it back. Tara, not gonna be here at the next regular board meeting. I think kind of very long this, uh, we should do it at the first meeting in November. And bring on the agenda for that for that meeting. And I think that's where we go.
Okay, that's what you said in the last meeting, October, so. And I apologize that it's not that it's taking longer than I anticipated.
Go ahead, you want public comment? Anything out there?
Nothing online.
Okay, cool minutes. Minutes to September eleventh, two thousand twenty five.
Global. Second.
Any additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes to September twenty fifth, select board meeting.
So. Second.
Any corrections? Addition? All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants count payable October third, two thousand twenty five, fifty one thousand nine seventy seven sixty three.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, payable October tenth, twenty eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars and one cent.
So. Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Payable October third, thirteen thousand eighty two dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Third time. Payable October tenth, eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars and ninety eight cents.
So.
That would move in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I need to go back, I can't for the minutes, I think um the minutes of September the seventh. I should set up saying, sorry, please, I.
Oh, wait a second. You were here, you were here? Mike wasn't, so we can't go down this. But you were here the last.
No, that's right, well, that's a.
Want to bring in some camera.
Yeah, and then other one that we voted that approved, we you guys still couldn't.
Yeah, we were here.
Oh, that, that's right, yeah, my bad, I'm sorry, man.
Excess weight permit. Uh, S M Gallivan. This is a fleet permit. Um, what's your pleasure?
Making motion to prove that. That fleet permit for S N Gallivan.
Or a local one. Wait a second. My other son.
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, based on town officials.
Quite a few, okay. Um, I'll start with something I also said earlier that we. Really reported yesterday that they don't know the the public auction have been resstranded on January sixth, twenty twenty six, they will be auctioning. If the owners are leaving home or installed um reading over. Another couple is that also the sheriff's department data online, they want to see what they're doing on their time here. That's available, I'm not gonna read it, it's very boring, but they can talk. Next, I have enough to introduce a person that. Um, she kind of just lives with me, I'm working on it the last few months, she met with Clutch on any mission. In early July, they discussed recommendations from the V C R C addition project. They wrapped up working with S B M C abuses on the mural feed on Century Park, they look for these. Uh, she helps hold the company at the Saturday holiday. The event where um burgers and hot dogs were provided more improved her participants. They performed trail events at Hoopit Run Trail in August. Coordinated August community conversations topic found from Boris's solid right libraries. Better information about trails, we thought we thought for the number of. Um, public town forest topics, food and management. Assisted with implementation of work grant for home town forests and not youth conservation for. Finishing their work in the lower loop trail in August and also working on completing draft of the required integrated management plan. They work on towns with a town sign vendor. It does design recreation weight rights, so it would be installed around town to identify recreational opportunities. Such as the Appalachian Trail, Long Trail, Dome Trail, South Street, Wildland, or the. Orma Trail, a broad, sorry, Broadville Trail, Mountain Meadow, was a very exciting. Collaborated on acquiring. Slash relocating new skateboard brands to boys, now skateboard park doors and three two. And initiated planning for the annual community holiday tree lighting. Uh, it will take place on Saturday, Thursday. Yeah. Uh, from Darcy at the wastewater treatment facility. They had a visit from the state A and R on September fourth, and she was happy to report that they made an excellent stand. You wanted to share that with the board and have. Oh, but um, this was um, I don't like to look at that as well, we second of course there. Um, sure. This one is from our email one coordinator, Priscilla. It's just basically a list that she's been filling, you know, ongoing email, phone calls, letters, et cetera. Uh, she's requested assistance from the western office for a project wherever the department of health is trying to identify when homes were built. Um, and they don't got home, but they have a lot in the process and. We're working on the South Street Road construction, she's doing site visits, emails. They copy that the email one map with no party. And you know, I generally. She had discussions with the road foreman, they had B W drive sign project in the Smith's Road. Yeah, so that's our niche finalized system. With symbology review project. Project reviewing certain symbols of addresses in the nine long systems. That from Priscilla. And lastly, from Thole, the road department, Fuller Brown rated in fact, Maple Grove Road Tuesday. And they are planning on paving it like say a Thursday, but preventing hopefully beyond the time of the meeting. Not sure that is.
They're still working on that.
The town offices will be done within the next couple of weeks. I received some prices for salt this year, maybe between ninety. Ninety dollars and a hundred dollars per ton, I have not done anything yet with them, so waiting for a couple more prices. Last year it was seventy seven sixty five a ton, the year before it was eighty six twenty a ton. Also, with fuel John Ray will stick at the same price as last year, it was twenty seven or open rack price. Last year, Goldie was twenty five cents, older rack price, if you all agree, I'll continue with John Ray for this tool. They have been good quality and deliveries. Uh, we have been doing talk. Rating, ditching, and getting equipment ready from Sasha to write to the law, any questions or thoughts, so free to ask. Thank you.
You know, I can't tell me you haven't seen this last year. I also just text. You.
I think there are solid reasons, if I'm not mistaken, it was up last year because of ice.
Yeah.
Where they are, they are a restriction. What's your president and uh? Rule?
I want to. I mean.
I want to take any more statements, say with John, right?
What was the price difference?
Twenty six.
Twenty. Twenty.
They would start using what I'm saying.
Okay. Um, what you make a motion, I have problems with January, but. But I don't want that. Well.
Um, um, the we're gonna accept that um, new price and based on January.
Starting that one, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
But. Okay. Um. It was only staying fine. Um, as we've been working on following through with. A violation letter that we sent out back in. It was like April, when it came. And then the. Resident. Reached out to some various organizations and they asked for an extension. To try to get some help to clean it up. We or I um. Going ahead and giving them a chance to get some refunding to help and some other things, but. That can be a big headway, so we know that. Letter here, the funding is going out. Will be served again, and they have thirty days. To start the cleanup process. And then the fines will start at a few thirty minutes. I think we've been more unfair and given. Some financial, an opportunity to get some financial help. And um. You're you're just having a minute and movement, so. Um. A small effort for that, for zoning, any small group, I think, any of those, she's concerned about that, particular residents. That's it, Zoom. Anything on the water, okay? Signage, so like um. My thought with with what happened here last night or this morning, when no one came in, is that like to have Joel or whoever. Um, make some signs up. For the town office parking areas, upper and lower. You know, overnight parking. On vehicles who told to use expense. Then.
I would like to end that. And include.
I didn't listen.
Oh. If you. Okay, that's fine, sorry, I'm sorry. Um. I would like to add the sanitaries for that.
That's fine.
Because they had issues in the past, I know a lot of important.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. No parking from. Dust to down.
Just like everybody here is here as well, I'm.
Carl, I'm fine with that, I. I didn't think about the sanitaries, you know, I know that the situation happened last night, I'm coming in this morning and it's like, okay, let's get some signage and. There's a little way to it then. Spots in here. That's all. So I'm taking a motion.
I'll make that motion.
What is your motion?
My motion is to start to direct Joel. To put signs up. On the upper. On the town office area, which would include. The lower parking, the upper parking and the parking up. By the church and the old town office. And. Signs down at Oak Hill. And at um Morgan Housley Cemetery. That there will be no parking between. Dom, no, dust and dome. And go ahead.
And I can say, but what about meeting nights, we don't have to see no parking overnight, you just say.
Overnight or overnight parking.
Seven and a half.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I've heard any Zoom policy discussion and possible actions. This is in light of what happened with the last. But a phone commission.
So um, as we were saying before, getting ready to go, I think we need to serve us people, because we really. About that, the teenage courage. Um, because we have them, so. And kind of look into webinar. Very much well remembered, but that seems to be what's suggested by S C M C that person also. Um, and which Bennington, uh, Bennington, we shall give up. That's how we do it, they run it as a webinar instead of the regular meeting, it gives a lot more controls.
Can you, one second, could you turn the volume off on your cell phone, please?
Yep.
So, thank you. Sorry.
Um, let's do, have any questions for now, that there is a cost.
Yeah, six ninety a year.
So.
Six hundred ninety dollars per year.
And that, that's gonna. Help to give us that safety net.
Yeah, because with a Zoom meeting right now, you can make it so that when people join, their camera is off, but you can't control if they turn it on or off. In a webinar, they have to ask for permission to turn it on. Um, and only the host can grant permission. Um, and then you can open up with a question and answer session, so we can self public public comment, um. There's nothing really that we can't do that we're doing in the meetings, but it just gives us an extra level of security.
It's more control.
Yes.
Very paid. One more hundred thousand dollars a year then. Uh, but we're getting vision for us.
It sounds like we've done our research, but you know, and it stood up. I don't think it's gonna be a foolproof thing for sure, but it's gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah, we were talking about that today, if somebody hacked it and took over the meeting, I'm sure that.
You can't.
Yeah, but this is an added level of security.
And then there's times we might not be, somebody on their shoes, doesn't recognize the name, first and last name, but we're not.
Not be that time, I don't want to bump, and I I totally agree that we shouldn't be. I've had next feelings about this, and I do agree that we should keep that. Or some of what's holding on here. What's more's pleasure? But everyone had a chance to read that over.
Okay.
We had money for the I in I T budget or would we move it from?
No, it's just it's important.
But.
Oh, I can.
So I.
We have all the.
And then you make a motion, I'll say it again.
Make a motion that we. Purchase the increase of carry for six hundred ninety dollars a year. For Zoom.
A second question.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the research on that.
We're completing recognition on the upcoming act two fifty changes, discussion impossible act.
Come on, come on.
You want to come up? No, no, I have a time to accomplish in there. Yeah, okay.
Um. So we um. Were joined. At our September sixteen. My commission day. By the. It's the last city. Uh, we had. Went over the. Tier. One B, which is the the more. Um, stricter version of the Act one eighty one. Um. Active, it's extensions for active. Um. Communities our size, pretty much either joining the one B or not at all. Um, they had a lot of questions. Had a good conversation, robust conversation. Um, we asked. Ton of questions about. About the. Minutes here. Everyone will get required in. Um. Okay, so one of the, one of the uh advantages to the exempt exemptions was that. Um, we would have. Except, we would be exempt. For up with the units or fewer on change or for the best. Um. As opposed to that, no, the active that the process. Um. We would basically be doing the work of the active that be. Uh. Process. Uh.
Who would be doing the work? The.
How many members would tell me?
Top.
It wouldn't necessarily be the planning commission.
Right.
It would be the dog, we never review more probably, right?
The dog would do uh probably.
So me, right.
And. Part of the paperwork, though, they mentioned that we would have to have. Um. That would be municipal staff or zoning. Don't give frustration. Um, we asked what that. Um, we asked what that they did, because we were there for us, there wasn't very, very much. An advantage in doing that. Um, we asked if there was uh, the punishment, if we had that decision. And there wasn't, there is no punishment. Um. It, through our discussion, questions and answers, we should return that. There's really, one of the questions I had was, you know, I asked our members who are there, they're a person. If they're running, did any issue with Act two fifty? If it developed, and those believe. You'd answer why not, of that was no. Act fifty is served great. Um. So we put it to a vote. And we we offered for for those guys who may not sort of more. And my cast, they said there's something more presented to us, and you must decide whether to recommend it to you guys or not. Um, and they voted and um. We voted that we would. Recommend that we not opt in for that, because at this point. Um, you can do it that way, anytime at a later point, we get a great opportunity. For for some some big development in an area that would. Has some active thirty constraints, then you might consider out the opting in for that. At that time.
Questions.
If we opt in. We opt in, we can opt in, opt out, opt in, opt out.
Oh, we could. Um. But you know.
I'm sorry.
But I know what you mean.
You know what I mean?
For one, for one project.
For for one project, who chooses not out in.
Yeah.
We have to think, it's just if we have to think hard. If we said we are not opting in because of X. That all of a sudden, a project comes by and we say we're gonna opt in, when we opt in with that project, we're. We're married. Was that in the present?
The um. One of the, one of the big things of that also was that we have to have adequate water supply. And the sewage system. We have one district for water supply. And have a lot of areas in town that are really challenged for waters, but they would. Um. Now, for instance, this this area here, probably we. Well, I. Water supply issuing, yeah.
That's, that's true. Do they consider adequate water, now, some may consider the adequate water supply, and it would either be municipal or slash. The the fire district.
Right, yeah. We we qualify, uh, in more than one area with the deceptive. System.
Yeah, because we have that.
Yeah. Well, um, we don't have. Don't have the water supply in a bundle set, you know, in most, in most of the the village areas.
One other question. When they can say adequate staffing, did they actually define what adequate staffing was?
I think we would probably turn.
It would depend on how we interpret that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That we add added work.
So if we opt out, nothing changes.
Nothing changes. Really? So. What I'd love to see is, I'd I'd love to see those, a list of reflections and answers. Um. Before I go on about it. Um, I'm gonna, uh, just see what kind of questions and answers that. You guys on the frame, you should pass, yeah, um.
That's it, that's it, I think, I think that's about it.
So it's, right.
Yeah, we didn't have. Pretty good. But we didn't want.
Right, right, I understand, right, and I I just would love to see that list.
Yeah.
Sent sent to, you know, given that, and then they can send it to us, and we can, you know, look at it, educate ourselves, I'm.
Yeah.
The questions that you guys asked, I mean, I don't wanna sit here and ask you questions that I have, right? Because I do have some being in the, but if they're already been asked, I don't wanna reiterate, you know, I just, I would just assume. We all get a chance to look at the questions and answers, and then if something's there that I'm. That I wanted to ask, it's not there, or it's not there, sorry, then then we can ask that question. But I, I, I think. On the surface. I think that what our planning commission is recommending is, of women, some of the way we should be going. But I just wanted to have it give us an opportunity.
We'll all, we'll go to ourself.
Sit down, I'll I'll line the question. Of the minutes.
Perfect.
And. So that's you.
Okay, thanks, and I'll, yeah, I'll forward it on to you, and if there's still more questions. Have a many measure, maybe it's our scene playback.
Did you guys leave, and he just wanted us to read his names?
Well, that's, I, you know, I had a question on, just don't want. So that's that's been a, uh, an issue on some. Um. On some supplement, right? You know, and I wanna know where that followed up, but I don't wanna, but you know, I don't wanna sit there and go over it, because because I think if it's not there. Then we need to have, where you see our scene command.
I think essentially, I, one question I did ask, is, is, yeah, our our authority has seen Act fifty. And they said, nah. Or. Act fifty, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, you must feel like we're we're actually participating.
Yeah, that's all we're doing to see that, is here, you're a producer.
Yeah.
You're not real. Maybe playing in last house, you know, great.
Yes, they said, pretty good, sit down at the table and eat your liver, and.
Yeah.
Get in the bed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no. I know, yeah, I I would love to see that before we go on this.
Sure.
Great, I would be hopeful.
That's awesome.
Perfect.
Okay, we just, we should be able to bring this back to the next.
Mm hmm.
Board meeting, if you see that, you know, whatever the date is, or whatever it's, twenty eighth, but what's the date?
Twenty thirds seventeen.
Twenty thirds seventeen. About to get anything there?
You have most, yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Uh, cemetery by law is special in possible action.
Um, that's been brought back.
Yeah.
We terror circuit that. Nothing has changed, like I said, the changes were based, we just discussed.
Yes.
So, um. I'm going to be a special, I'm going to be accept this material by laws, it is intended. And circulated from our last meeting.
For a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All is fair.
Hi.
Down off the snow removal discussion of possible action.
So. We used to have a building from our position, when we. Sort of change that more, we just like. Passing ten hours, a lot of weight. Um, so I need for, oh, well, you know, last year, Joel kind of a, or even smell. Won't go, so I mean, go to the power company and show up here. Um, so this year, I'm not sure if he's hiring another person or not. Um, but I hear that there's also a concern for snow removal at transfer station. Um. And that was all today, and I also saw that in Tom's, um. Uh, cattle, man, stuff that they use as an art. Um, so just welcome for suggestions, they go on the nation where they will plow, but he doesn't have a shovel. And they don't think I'm gonna be able to find some, just like shovel, but I am looking for advice and on the board, but I can.
That's a discussion that we need to bring Joel in.
I have my thoughts, sir.
Um, so that we can talk about that. I, I did talk to him a little bit about it yesterday, where if I brought something else and it came up. As far as the snow plowing goes here and, um. At the transfer station, and that's not, that's not an issue. Um, and the show. Um, a way into here. Um. We had a couple, we we had a walkway into the main entrance, you know, initially. Wouldn't have been, wouldn't be an issue either, coming back and cleaning everything up, maybe. A few hours after the storm, and we get the roads cleaned up type of thing. Uh, but that's, that's certainly something that just kinda cropped up, so it's definitely something researched out and figured out. Where we see.
Same way. Joe turns, see, let's see, it's available. And.
Oh, we did. A concern I would have.
Yeah, I'm concerned with getting too close to our, because.
That's true.
If we want to, if we're gonna contract it out for someone, I just, I.
Well, for a contract, we don't, I mean, my thing is, we contract for shoveling and plowing.
I don't, I don't, why would we contract out plowing?
Because.
We have all these vehicles.
Are you gonna get somebody just to shovel?
Yeah, we've always had a contract prior to having our own lease up.
That's right.
We had a contract for snow blowing and it's treatment of the walkways.
Is anybody getting attention to taxes?
Yeah.
Just asking.
But is Joel?
Asking a question.
But the way I kinda understood that Joel does have people to do the shoveling.
That's the job, so we think that not have.
All right, and part of the discussion that I had yesterday with them, like I said, I think we need to have Joel in here before we do anything on this.
Actually.
And then I, were. And then, so we're worried about a storm. Unless you're going on hiring a contractor tonight, how are you gonna hire a contractor, you have to put out a bid.
Right.
And what are you gonna do? Right, you're not gonna just hire Joe's.
Oh, we're not, no, we were, the thing of it is, is we have to, if we're gonna go that, we have to start moving on, we have to start thinking about it now. Versus thinking about it a month from now.
Well, I think in the, in the, in the interim, I'm pretty confident that our road crew. Could make sure that. The town office is plowed out and shoveled until we come up with a concrete plan. I'm pretty sure they can kind of come up with. Uh, to take care of the transfer station until we come up with a concrete plan.
If the board tells us to do that.
Right.
It's not, it's a constant back and forth of, we might actually do.
I am concerned about the cost of, 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 entirely.
Then I guess I need a motion that for the.
I don't think we need any more.
No, we just had a.
We have, that's right, we have to track Joel. Until something is figured out, but for some reason, there is a snowstorm.
I'm pretty confident that our road forming is not gonna leave the town office unplowed. If there's a freak storm that happens to leave.
It's not that you do it intentionally, but if the guy is busy, I hope this one's. And I'm not trying to argue after saying.
I know that, but if the roads aren't, if the roads aren't passable, nobody's gonna get to the town. You sit at my transfer station and to do town, that's such a good, don't forget. I'll give you that. You put James on, we're gonna.
That's the chart you're, um.
Right, okay, I'm just saying, like, you know what, that's fine, but. If it comes up an issue.
I'll talk to Joel.
That's all, that's all, that's fine, that's.
I'll talk to Joel and have him make sure until we come up with a concrete plan that the transfer station and the town office. Is taken care of. If there's a storm, until we come up with a concrete plan, which may take us a month.
But then, I just, just saying, that's all, that that's the case, don't remember, we had that to report.
I'll take care of it. That part of it, and I don't disagree that we need to come up with family. To really, for sure. Well, you know, I don't think we're prepared to come up with a concrete plan at this time, to, you know. Hmm, first off, we don't have money in a budget. To. We're working on a fiscal year budget that's already been voted on, we don't have money in a budget. For an outside contractor to come in and do those two places. You don't have it, it's not bad.
I agree with you.
I played in the Long Tree earlier last year, that.
On that, though. But 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 I but I want to lock that down, exactly what's going to happen before. A month of Joel tomorrow, okay? And I'm happy to have Joel do it all, but I just wanna make sure that it will get done.
Anything else on that? Capital asset plan, continuing discussion and feedback from department heads, select board priorities and next steps.
So I share that I have priorities with everyone, um, the headphones are all on the, um. So the files, so I'll go and see them, if like. You want to list them all out, because I would love to hear of them, with that, probably, you know.
Carl. Um, for capital planning, um. I would love at some point that we actually had an indoor stairwell from. Or something from the upstairs to the downstairs. But that's far off. In the future, or in this domain.
In this domain, in this domain.
And I know, the, it's just, that's far off in the future, I know that. Um. A secured location for documents. That need to be secured, but we don't. Have women to say for. Downstairs. Oh. Looking at maintenance programs for the bridges in town. I don't even know if that is. A capital plan thing or not, well.
I'm sure, I think Joel has that on his cap.
Well, he does.
We have a good one, so. Yeah, it's, but anyways. So I'm.
Oh. Nothing, I mean, I do, but I forgot half of what I was gonna say, so. This is an ongoing project, so hopefully I remember the other aspects, I don't know.
Jimmy?
Sure, two, thanks, or, oh, I was, I didn't turn it off, but. And it's a lot of this before in our conversations, but I'm concerned about wages, um, for our employees. Um, we have a road crew, as has been brought up multiple times, that. Some of them are aging out, um, I'm also concerned about the retirement, so I'm really concerned about being able to be. Competitive as ten as we can be, um. Talked about the difference between wages that we can afford versus loans, um, and I wanna get to examples, you know, just, but also it's easy to drive ten minutes, so. Um, sorry, I'm very concerned about that. Sure, um. The other issue I had, um. I don't know, that's again. One of the things I wanted to do, actually, was invite the public to also comment. Um, I wanna make sure that that's open, that people understand that's very interested, um. But for a budget year, also a long term capital fund, priorities to people who. Out till. I'm also concerned going forward, and now, emergency services, sure, those are probably.
Yes.
Jimmy? I. And both of those from. Jamie, I wasn't sure about the emergency service, with a capital or strategic, or a strategic plan, um. Um, also access to our town lands. Um. Forest areas. Already talked about. Yeah, keep our town properties. It's all good, all that. Ball fields. Our price for our kids. Got the donation in Waynes Town that upgraded our shade park, that was a nice thing. But we still have to plant for the future, far as up, that all this stuff, so.
Yeah. So the, one of the boat owners that had, um, Jimmy was exactly what you said, the wages. Competitive wages, um. For all, for all the employees. Um. Then I have. A lot of my capital plan ideas. Um, there's some, yeah, I'd like to see, um, some inventory. For, um, our sewer treatment plant, um. Mainhole covers and some of the things, I know she has. A little bit of stuff, but they're starting to age out there. I'd love to see a capital plan, that as part of a capital plan, but I know Dashi is already working on that. Um. The road. Equipment. I think Joel's doing a really good job of that, so that's kind of. We. She brings her stuff, and then we research it and improve it, so that's coming up. One of the things that I thought about ever since we've acquired the land, um. The three hundred and forty acres, and then made it over a thousand fifteen US acres. Is a sustainable logging forest, forest management plan. Um, and that forest management plan. What I'd really like to see it do is. Offset. Try to offset. Property taxes. Um, and when I say a sustainable forest management plan, I'm not a forester. And I really can't say how or what I would do, because I'm not a forester. But I think there's certain ways to. Sustainably log. It hypothetically, if you, if you logged a hundred acres every year, you know, you're on a ten year program type thing. And and that's hypothetical, that's not what I'm suggesting. And, and that's hypothetical, that's not what I'm suggesting, right, cause I don't know, maybe a forester said, no, we only fifty acres or, or whatever, I don't know that. But, uh, but I also believe that a sustainable. Forest management clan, plan is good. Not only for trying to offset some property taxes, but it's also good for the environment if you do it correctly. And I think that's, that's a major. Gave the undertaking to try to do it correctly. Everything. All phases of plants and animals and whatever thrive on a sustainable logging forest management plan, I don't wanna call it logging, cause that's not. I keep throwing that out there and that's not what I'm trying to push, I'm trying.
Forest harvesting.
Yeah, no, yeah, it, it's just a forest management plan. Right, so maybe you, maybe you don't harvest anything, maybe you're just going through a, if there's because, I'll leave it there, I don't know.
But you find, you find a qualified forester.
Right. And, and that's right, but that's just one of those things that, that I've thought of the other since we acquired that, because there is the potential, so. So if you only get twenty thousand dollars a year, it's twenty thousand you can offset taxes in a.
Well, that's what town heading, but.
Whatever, it's just.
We've also been able to get, not that we can have a more predicted relationship with that, getting to the any conservation district. Michael Grandes is also functioning as a forester as well, and I'm sure that none of you want to make a presentation.
Right.
Us about those possibilities.
I just wanna.
Yeah.
And that's just one of the things that. Kind of, you know, kind of. One of the things that I think was gonna be, be taken care of, you know, we own. You know, quite a few acres in town, that it's not just in that one piece I'm talking about, it's all the town all the time.
Oh, yes.
Making sure of distribution.
Exactly, exactly.
But that helps us in multiple ways.
Sure.
Not just. You say in the logging aspect, that helps keep fire control down, opens areas up for hiking.
I know.
Yes, trails. And all that stuff, oh, yeah.
So that was one of the things, you know, other than the wages and our new Joel, you know, our, our department heads are. Um, doing a really good job, I think, on their, on their plan, although it's not on paper, so to speak, like what we're trying to put there. I, I think getting it on paper is also important, we don't get it out there. They have it, so to speak, but. Having where everyone can see it, what their plan is, but. From Darcey, Joel and Tom, and. Um, emergency services is definitely on the list, should be on the list, I don't have the answer to that either. But that's stuff we need to. Think about, um. I think we need to. Our planning machine. Is, I know they're working on bylaws and some other things, and. Um. I think that, that we need to figure out. With the town plan, where we're gonna go, or where we wanna go, right, you know, and I'm looking at Fred and Dave, cause they're team guys, right? I, I think, I think, you know, twenty years ago, we were hoping for. You know, industrial corporation to come in and provide two hundred jobs, I think that's, that's not gonna happen, I mean, it's just not there. So I think we kind of gotta shift gears a little bit, maybe, and try to figure out where to go and what to do, so I think that should be in the cap. Um, and I, and I know you guys are working on that, and I'm not trying to force, not trying to say, well, you should do, these are just my ideas. You know, not one person said, I'm sorry. Um. That's kind of it in a nutshell for me, nothing, and nothing that anybody else hasn't said, I agree with. Everything has been said on, on all aspects across the board here, I just added those couple of things on my own.
Okay, so he wants to go south on this, maybe that was the question to think. When I try to come to a current town plan, to see if I can add a few more things.
Yeah.
The department has sent you.
Department, I did some.
But you forward handle money.
Yeah, they look.
Oh, I didn't, was that? There any more back?
F.
Oh, um. And so, so what, do we think we would need? Do we think we would need more than the one special? Cause, cause we can bring in Joel and Darcey, say, next week, right, and we can talk with them about their capital plan and whatever. But then, should we have the one with the planning commission after we. Come up with some target areas, and then we can bring the, you know, the planning commissioner and say, hey, this, these are target areas that the select board has identified. For a town plan.
I, I agree, we have time for the last session.
It really is the guy budgeting, it's gonna carry the planning. Really insulting the guy.
Right, and I don't wanna drag that out, but I also don't wanna, I'm not sure of, of the timeline here, right, maybe we have the planning commission in first, I don't think so, I think we do. Joel and Darcey in the town, you know, and then the town thanks, then bring the planning commission in and say, okay, you guys are working on a town plan, you're working on, on, um. Bylaws, you're working on this stuff, this is the direction, you know, we don't wanna go here, we wanna go over here. What do you think, Fred, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna ask your opinion.
Yeah, that, um, you know, we're, we're gonna at some point, need, need you guys feedback, and, and your suggestions and stuff. Um, we're working through right now, we're just trying to get a feel for. Your company, what seems to be working, what doesn't seem to be working.
Right.
And, you know, kind of very stark and sure, making the work our options are.
Well, we can, should we go higher?
Well, I'm just thinking about timing, because we are really still at the very beginning of that process, and I don't think we've really discussed. Priorities or anything like that yet, so I don't know what your timeline is, but we may not be able to give you a lot of feedback in the near term. Well, and I'm, I'm not sure that we're, I'm. I'm not sure if I'm gonna look for old ones with feedback, really, Dave, I, I think that, that. I wanna be able to give, I wanna be able to give you guys the direction, so you're not wasting time on something that our capital plans. It's not aligned there, right, that, that's, that's the term I'm looking for, our, our capital plan and the, and the way the town plan, the planning person's working. You know, we're going in this direction, and you guys are going here, I think, I think we need to go, we need to figure out what direction we wanna go in, and then we can bring you guys in and say, okay, here's where we wanna go.
Here's our town, here's our, here's our plan.
Do it.
Now, you guys go there, you've got our plan.
But in the end. Or we think about the money.
A hundred percent.
What the priority is.
Right. Right, but a hundred percent.
Yes.
So we need to have Joel and Darcy.
And that's why, yeah.
In here next week. You know, schedule one for. Five thirty to. Six thirty or six fifteen or something, and then one from six fifteen to seven or.
Yeah, I was gonna be like, I think that's a thing, you should be like, um. But they do need, yeah, I've had it as important as conversation with my mission, giving them a studio.
Well, it needs to be given, I don't think, but I don't think anybody's ever given a planning permission in any direction. Going.
With the plan.
Right, right, but, but, you know, the, the slight or, to the best of my knowledge, I haven't said here, never given a planning permission in any direction whatsoever, and then I'm trying to direct people, it's like. Right, you, you guys are. Doing the best you can on what you think we want, or the town.
You guys see, it could be very, you know, come on different than what we should.
Sure.
We can kind of merge in together.
I would love, I would love to see. I would love to see public comment, that's a great idea, you know, what I thought of that, or on, on capital plan. I'd love to see some public input on that. And I think that it's gonna be really difficult to get it by the next Thursday, but.
I think that needs to be a longer fuse.
Yeah, because I don't think that next Thursday, we'd have to make a decision.
No. Well, we gotta think about it slowly, cause we gotta start budgeting.
Okay, right, let you start budgeting.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we had, okay, if we start, first in, the first in November.
As soon as possible.
That's three weeks.
It's usually actual, we start.
Well, that's three weeks.
It, it's sort of, it's impossible.
I know, but.
So I think we're making out, so there's certainly better people that are more priority than others.
Or like, you know, we're not alone in that part, yeah. Thanks for making some bad stuff, like, we have to just listen to everything.
Right.
And we've taken, I think, yes.
So I'd like to ask the public to input, um, via email, on capital from what they'd like to see.
So terrible, so what you're saying is, is we put everything on the table, and then we take stuff off according to our prior rules.
I, I, let me, let me just.
Yes, that's, yeah.
But nice to have that. Far as the public input, oh, this is a continuous, we, always growing thing, so. Man, I have everybody's ideas initially, but ever going on, we can continue to incorporate.
There's something that you totally be missing here, because, right, that's, it's really important that we're just, um.
We hadn't hit that road or whatever, so we didn't know what was happening, but.
That.
Other eyes, it's good to have other eyes.
Okay, I think we got a plan going forward that, comfortable with that. Uh, cap system lane records management services contract, a little mistush, possible.
Um, so I think I sent out to you board, and then I buy them for a hundred points, but, um. Do we want hopefully to mark some part, these, um, around back there. At first she was, um, concerned with a forty-five percent increase. And she questioned that, and he came back with a fifteen percent total increase. Um, but she was really having difficulty addressing concerns about the scanner, and she didn't have a lot of concern, she was. Right now, at the board, so I'm just trying to.
I saw, um, I was in here the other day, and I saw a, um, map that Virginia has made up. Um, when passing, you know, the, you know. Or it's showing a best match of something they can use.
I think fifteen percent, uh, for that, I mean, I think that's a good job negotiating that, it's going to increase over three years. And okay, you know, really, right now, we get one, but it's only standing, like.
I'll make the motion that we accept Julie's recommendation and sign the contract. Any more questions? All the pair, I. Um, fifteen is been taken off, you know. That's the rescue squad.
Uh, no, no, I don't think so. Um, I'm impressed, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
So, in rescue squad, heard about the, uh, municipal loan program that the town was willing to try to apply for. And they probably would be very, if they. Apply for as well, and we reached out to the state and said, they don't want me to do that, but if. We would provide a select over to provide a letter, just saying that they support them applying for that, and that they're in cycle service, too often they support them applying to municipal loan. That may, they'd be able to refinance one of their D S L loans, so when given loan, it would be one of their, um, annuals, current annuals loan.
Also refinance a loan.
Yeah, so that's a great.
I'm actually better about that, so my initial understanding was like, to apply for a municipal loan, which I have a lot of concerns about.
Yeah.
Some of our, our decisions.
And she, Becky would be applying for, we would just be providing a letter that suddenly support them.
I think it better be.
I'll make a motion that we. Um, have a letter sent to the. Rescue class in the, or is it the, do we send it to the state? Or we just, we just give the res- rescue squad a letter of support to apply for the municipal.
There you go, what Mike said.
That'd be that.
Any more stuff or any questions on it? All the pair, I. Good. Public comment. Need to open up in the room, I'm gonna ask that all public comment. Um. I don't want any derogatory comments. I don't want any finger pointing. And I don't want any accusations, not any of those things, or similar things. You know, I'm gonna shut the public count down right there, maybe I have three minutes, so do I have any public comment, you know? Can you state your name, please, sir?
Hello, Brown. Um, October twenty-fifth, I'm gonna be doing a truck retreats at Hilltop Arms. Along with Sam at the Village Market, and we've got the fire department going to set up. And trying to help direct traffic and keep traffic get a pace to where it's safe for people to, but, but, you know, just in case. We get a lot of kids running around, you know, how the kids can be, they can dart here or there real quick. Uh, they're gonna kind of do traffic control in the road for us, the fire department and stuff like that, so. I just wanted to let you all know on that.
And truck, truck machine.
Yeah, there'll be some hot rod tires, some trucks, tractors, whatever, kind of a tire show, truck retreats for the kids.
Can I get a time?
Uh, we'll go Saturday afternoon.
Is there an end time or just till you're done?
Just till we're done.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if it's done in an hour, then we're done, but if it runs a couple hours, great, you know, I, I'd really like to see this turning to something maybe. A little bit bigger as time goes on to include the town for a, maybe a fall harvest day or something like that, but. It's something to get going, something into town here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think they need traffic, some direction, do you need any traffic direction for that?
No, I'm just not having their, we tones out.
Okay.
Just so, you know, and caution slow, and just, just there, just to kind of slow traffic down, so they're not cruising through there at fifty, sixty miles an hour, even though it's forty. They do it every day through there.
Yeah.
Um, and I do have a couple other, uh, a couple other things I'd like to inquire about also. Um, as we all know, yesterday Donald Trump. Um, designated Antifa has a, uh. Domestic terrorist group. Uh. I got something sent to me a while ago, that, and, and it's kind of been on my mind, and I'd like to ask about it. Um. What I was sent was, it's to do with Jenny, Jenny.
I'm gonna stop you right there, no, I, I understand that, but I laid the ground rules right off the bat.
I have.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna get into a bunch of name things. You can, you can use the word individual, you can do whatever you wanna do, but I, but I'm not gonna get into a name, throw in an email.
All right, well, then.
All right. I'm gonna be really fair here. I, I had you with a minute and twenty seconds, but I stopped your time. When we were talking about your trunk retreat, and then restarted when you changed something, that's okay, just so you know that, I, I wanna be fair. I'm not, I'm not gonna do an, I'm not gonna do a name thing here, that's not what it's gonna be. Okay?
Well, my question.
The individual is fine.
My question is. I have questions about a member on board that has ties to Antifa. Right here.
Oh, do, question and answer for both, uh.
Well, that's.
I have at least.
So are you done with your public comment portion?
I would like to know why we have Antifa on our board, are you done?
Are you done with your public comment portion? And I'm willing to let a board member answer that, but we're not, she's. Not gonna debate with you back and forth, are you, I'm asking you, so I'm, you have, you have, and let me ask you this, I'm being shut down as a citizen of this town for asking questions about somebody who has.
No. Ties to an Antifa group, he's hanging on. Asking you, have a good day. I will make, Donald Trump knows all this information.
Thank you.
Damn.
Hold on, hold on, I'll be to you, I promise. I'm gonna give you the opportunity to answer that. Or some of the public comment.
I, I appreciate what you're doing here, but I also think it would have been helpful, though, at least to talk to him. Um. To avoid that kind of public scene. Um, to avoid threats, um, so. Here's why I would have personally to have, um. And I think this is, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this, like, I. Am aware of the posts that was made on Facebook. I am aware of what he was holding on his phone. I'm aware that that was some sort of post that was made. Months ago, I came aware of that in April, we're all aware of that. Made by an organization, so I. What is this? And it's very clear from the organization posted, it literally. Claiming to be members of the American Nazi Party, which apparently that is on the website. Um, which is really disturbing, and I will say to my knowledge. As against my knowledge, and this is very public knowledge at this point, first, I've heard anybody but before. But I'm not aware of the organization that exists that is called Antifa. Now, my understanding is that stands for anti fascist. Which is really weird to me. Because until recently. As far as I was aware, most Americans were opposed to fascism, and if by that someone means. In the way that Dwight Eisenhower. In World War Two was opposed to it, was opposed to actions of Hitler, was opposed to actions that he was following in the Pacific. And was opposed to in the way that my grandfather, who served in the Hundred and First Airborne. Gladly in World War Two and fought in World War Two. In his words to me, in opposition to fascism, yes, I think fascism is a bad thing. I don't support concentration camps. I don't support rounding people up for their political beliefs. Um, so I don't. Understand why this has become controversial. What I can say about that post that he had on his phone. And what he gladly said to him. Is that it was full of absolute falsehoods. And not only was it both falsehoods, it's also cool if they say that context. And I'm sorry, I don't think something coming from a source of the American Nazi Party. Is exactly criminal. And that's fine, if that's the party that someone wants to join. Whatever. I suppose they can publish what they want. Because you still have. Hopefully robust, I have a robust person in my freedoms in this country. Which I love for everyone, including the gentleman who left here angry, and I wish he would have stayed. Um, and I support that. So. Anyone has any questions, they can ask them. The question was also raised, I saw on that Facebook post. I just, she's saying the pledge to play. Anyone ask me that at any point in time. I have it, I do wanna answer this, but this is keep coming up. Unless asking this on the comment. I had it for almost twenty years and stopped when I was ordained. That's no secret. I've been a pastor for eighteen years and served multiple communities in three different states at this point. And I have no objection to anyone else saying a pledge. And I don't wanna be offensive, so when my fellows, like, working for stamp, and other people, I'm going to stand. But I personally. Cannot say that. For religious convictions. For me personally, that feels like idolatry. To pledge allegiance to a symbol, even a symbol that a lot of people love, a symbol that my grandfather fought under. That all my uncles had fought under, that my father did, I come from a military family. So it's not disrespect. Can I say that from the position I am coming from, because I truly, genuinely hold a religious belief that I can't do that. And nor that everyone would stop anyone from doing that. And that's what I think is really important about the country that we live in, is we don't compel people to do that, but it's not disgusting. Just like we don't sign these people. Or ask who's going to dig the hole to put her in, which also came up on the Facebook post today. So the idea of being so angry with me without ever having a conversation with me. Of ever getting to know me. To then take it to the next level. To ask who will dig the hole that put me in. That's really heartbreaking, that's where we are. So that's why I was looking to have that conversation tonight, even though public comment was out of bounds, I guess should have asked to talk backwards, but. Yeah, I'm happy to have conversations. I would appreciate not having that, but. Thank you.
And.
Uh, could you just take a moment? I'm sorry, it's Jenny Dewar, um. You're all elected officials, and whether I always agree with you or not. I respect that you have been elected, I think you're doing a good job as being select for this town. Genie, you personally, I think are an incredible asset to this board and to this community. And we are very lucky to have your brain and your convictions and your love of this town. And um, I'm horrified. What I've done today. Uh, so I thank you all for serving, every single one of you. And um, I thank you all for working for the town. That's unacceptable. I also do not plead a pledge of allegiance, for my own reasons, I haven't said it since I was ten. But I pledge to this country of ours. And I, I believe in our country. It's just words. So thank you, all of you.
Good.
Good.
Do I have any other public comment, anything on? Any hands up now?
Um, no, no hands are up.
Some hands up, do I have any more public comment in the room?
Just this, what I'd say, the genie thank you for. Now, I mean, it was. Did, well, we need to have that. The lesson that we honestly. So we need to do a conversation, like you were saying.
I agree with you, I'm always happy to.
There's no more public comment. I'm gonna reflect on a couple of things. Um, this has kind of popped up today. But these are things that I've been. Thinking about for a while. Um. Give me just a moment, I think people having. Their opinions. On. Whether it's political or anything else, I think that's what makes America, America. Right, that's what makes the United States, the United States, is being able to have your opinions. And being able to have discussions. About your opinions. Open discussions, civil discussions. Unfortunately. In my life, it's changed, not a lot. Those, those things have changed drastically. Right? People can no longer have an opinion. On things and have a discussion. With a person disagrees with their opinion because it becomes hostile. Because somebody read on social media. That something was going on. Right? Well, look, it's social media, social media is the. Realization or the heading towards the realization on the United States. Here. Right, because we read it on Facebook or we read it on Instagram or wherever we saw it. There's a hundred other things out there, right? And I don't know. But it's gossip. Nobody made that up. Right, no, no, no group made that up because they don't like you Fred Miller. And I'm just using you for example, and I I I hope I can say that to you, because I know you're not gonna be offended by that. Exactly. But, but when we can't have an open discussion. Where, where are we? And I, I'm gonna challenge. The residents of the town of Palma. And I thought about this extensively today. I'm gonna challenge the residents of the town of Palma. To try to have open discussions. With people. No matter what your political beliefs are, or if you believe that you should never cut your grass. And I have a manicured mom next, what difference does it? You should be able to have an open discussion about. And now, cause I mow my grass and you don't, I'm not gonna go mow your lawn, so it looks bad. Right? That's, that's where we're slipping. And I can, maybe I'm way off base, but I don't think so. I think is, I think is Palma residents. I think when you disagree with somebody. Talk about it. Have a discussion. Right, sit down. And when you're in getting a sandwich in Winchester store, well, sitting in the back of the truck or the car, be talking about things. But don't, excuse me, don't walk home and say, oh, that. So and so, well, that that's crazy, that's crazy. Have open discussions. I wanna, I wanna say that, that. Sitting here on the board. I, I think that every board member I've ever sat with here, whether we did agree or disagreed, or whether the. Residents agree or disagree with that particular person. Every person that I've ever sat here with has had nothing but the best interest of Palma in in their goal. That's their goal. What else do we want? We're not gonna change national politics, we're not. Right? The, the fifteen hundred people or two thousand or three thousand or. However many people live in the state of Vermont, we're not changing national politics. But what we can change is what happens here in our town. Right, from the Massachusetts line to the New York line to the Bennington to the Stanford line, we can control that. And that's where we should be focusing. We should focus here, where we can, where we all live, stop this other stuff, it's crazy. I don't wanna keep going on big rant, cause I know if I'm high.
I just know you can.
But I just, I just think that we need to do that, Fred.
And it's, you know, I do, I agree with you about the social media. And it's a, it's a good thing that people are like. Way here, you're ready with it. But you know, I would also suggest to people in this town, just get out of that and almost stay out of it. You know, if you're here, if you have an argument with the social media, that's one thing, get out of the way of course. Okay. A lot, you know. Read recent news, come and talk to us, yeah. Come talk, yeah, exactly, come and talk to us. Everything, everything, yeah, go directly.
Then, I I very much appreciate what both of you said, um. And I just feel like. We have become so divided and yet we're a small community. And if we had as our role to be accepting of people who feel differently than we do. And figure out how to work together with somebody who feels really differently than. That would go a long way, but right now we put up a wall. And we say they're bad. Whichever side you're on, and that's just not how we build community.
It's not.
And we have to be focused on building community and, you know, I I have to agree actually with what Genie said that. Figuring out a way, if this is the forum where somebody wants to come and throw accusations at somebody. To have that conversation would be good rather than just cutting, now. Running out of the room is also not very productive, but I can't win about that, so just a thought to. How to expand the process so we could use this as a forum for some of these valuable conversations.
Point, I'll take. Do I have any other public comment? Anybody else out to handle, nope. We don't need the executive session, so I'll entertain a motion when you're. I'll make that motion. The motion round second, can you start them? All in favor, I. Thank you everyone for attending. Thanks for the work.